Let's go, roll call Deb.
Mr. Agia?
Here.
Mr. Costa?
Here.
Mr. Hart?
Here.
Mr. Hudson?
Here.
Ms. Lawrie?
Here.
Mayor Coogan?
Here. Salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present and are deemed to be acknowledged and permissible. At this time, we have nobody signed up for citizen input. I don't believe there's any recognition awards tonight. There is? Look who I forgot. You want to read it?
Yeah, there are seven. There's seven tonight. It's all from the same situation.
Okay. Here, we're going down? We're going down? All right, we're going to go down in front of the stage. High School. On Sunday, March 1, 2020, Fall River Police received word of a missing female Durfee student who may be in crisis. Sergeant Fattaro reached out to the district lead school adjustment counselor Claudia Costa for support. Mrs. Costa immediately contacted all SACs at Durfee. Each SAC responded by looking within our database to identify contact and leads that would be important information for the FRPD to conduct a search. Collaboration between the Durfee SACs and the Fall River Police Department continued throughout the afternoon. The student was located by FRPD at 5:00 PM. This event is a prime example of the student-centered teamwork that goes on in every school every day in the Fall River public schools, even on a Sunday afternoon. Congratulations to the following people. Claudia Costa.
There are often times in the school system where folks are obviously going above and beyond to support kids. It's a daily event in this system, and we never say thank you. So today was an example of a time where we wanted to recognize and honor several members of our team for their work, always going above and beyond for our students. And with that, we could give out 1,800 awards for the work that happens in the Fall River public schools. And we want to thank specifically in this case, our team of SACs at Durfee High, Durfee Leadership, and everyone who stepped forward to support kids. So with that, we thank you.
Okay, we'll now have the superintendent's report. Dr. Matthew Malone.
We have a Durfee construction update, and I request permission of the committee to also give an update on the preparations and events around the coronavirus, events that I didn't have 2048 hours before. Okay, very quickly, I'll do the Durfee construction update. This project is moving ahead. We are almost ready to put the pool in. The exterior shell is now being applied in the courtyard, so the brickwork, the masons have started the brickwork. They're continuing the weatherproofing on the exterior that you see from Elsbree and behind. The roof has been put on in all areas except for the pitched roof. And all MEP, which stands for mechanical, electrical, and plumbing, has been, is being ongoing as we speak. We have about 150 to 170 workers on site every single day. We expect that number over the summer to grow to over 200, is more skilled laborers and craftsmen come on board. And so far, I cannot tell you how pleased I am, not only with the construction management company, but the architects, the project managers, and all of the labor unions who have been involved with the subcontractors. This is an exciting project, and we really look forward to continuing to see this beautiful testament to the city of Fall River continue to rise on Elsbree Street. Are there any questions about the Durfee construction? As not, I'll go into the second topic. As the committee has known, and as we've been communicating publicly across the Commonwealth, across the country, across the world, everyone's been dealing with issues of the coronavirus. We have a crisis management team that's been working with state and city officials to ensure that we have proper protocols and practices in place and that we're ready to respond as needed. At this time, there are no, still no confirmed cases, although there are presumptive cases in Massachusetts. But we also know that people are very scared, they're worried, and we encourage folks to really understand and stay calm that it is flu season and the normal flu does occur and is prevalent right now. As we speak, I've spent the last three hours working on a situation in central office where we had an employee who was experiencing flu-like symptoms. This employee, along with another employee, traveled to a district-sponsored conference in Las Vegas in February, February 24th to 29th. Employee came back to work the second, third, and fourth, and that evening felt flu-like symptoms and did the right thing, and stayed out of work since then. This employee is, at this time, has not proven any positive coronavirus, but it's definitely something that we're all focused on. So out of an abundance of caution, following protocol, I've directed both employees to stay at home and self-quarantine until their flu symptoms, it's 24 hours without fever and/or the full 14 days is required if it is a case. But right now, we do not have any evidence that there is a case. But out of an abundance of caution, I also shut the central office down at 3:30 today and brought in our cleaning crew, and we immediately disinfected the entire central office. I think this really worked well. They did the deep cleaning with the disinfectant guns that we have to, they're like super soakers, if you will, to clean. We've been in contact with the local public health department, and we want to confirm that all of our information and our responses in line with best practices. Again, we do not have any positive confirmed cases of coronavirus. It is flu season, and out of an abundance of caution, two employees that did go on a conference to Las Vegas, which was an international conference, out of abundance of cautious, I have sent both those, directed both those employees to stay home, self-quarantine, following the language in the contracts. And I'll continue to report, we're all, every single agency in Massachusetts, every single public space, every single supermarket and restaurant, everyone is dealing with what we do. There will be people who get sick. If you are sick, please stay home, contact your healthcare provider. And I don't want to see anyone in school with a fever. Stay home until you're fever-free. And do the best possible, the best possible solution, of course, is to monitor yourself and make sure you're continuing to follow handwashing procedures, et cetera. So again, I want to be very clear that we have an employee that experiences flu-like symptoms, was on a trip in the country, in Las Vegas, has not tested positive, has been to the doctor. Doctors' offices, of course, are backed up, and they're not even testing folks right now, they haven't been out of the country. And because of that, again, we made the decision to let those two employees stay home until such time as they're not experiencing any flu-like symptoms. Does the committee have any questions about this? The reason why I'm reading this to you now is because I sent this out in an email to all faculty and staffs, who everyone knows, so there's no rumors, and put it on, but our, because we hit a, we hit a power line today, our server is down, it will be up and operational in the next few hours. So with that, are there any questions of the committee?
Hearing none. Do we have a student delegate report tonight, Samaya? I have two sets of minutes that need approval. I'd hear a motion to approve two 5:20 facilities and operations subcommittee. Do you have a second?
Yes, I can.
Any comment? Deb, call the roll, please.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Lawrie?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. I also have the regular meeting of the Fall River School Committee from 2:10-20. I'll entertain a motion. Motion to accept. Wait a second. Any discussion? Deb, call the roll, please.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Lawrie?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. I have a number of travel requests tonight. Motion to approve. Wait a second. Any discussion on the travel requests? Mr. Corey?
Yes, so in light of today's developments, will we vet, you know, the areas where students and teachers are traveling to as we chart the course forward? We're going to be careful, some of them are going like out of state.
Mr. Malone?
We're monitoring, I mean, we're prepared to, to do as we must to make sure that we're preventative in nature. Right now, we do not have any international trips scheduled next year. There is one at Durfee, we'll continue to monitor. But this year, there are, I believe, two to Florida. We haven't canceled them yet, we're monitoring, and we'll make those decisions as more information becomes available, working very closely with, so everyone knows and is clear. Every superintendent in the state is dealing with this issue right now. Most are just outright canceling all sorts of trips. We haven't been in this reactionary, again, we're monitoring, but we will make decisions if need be in the best interests of public health with the information we have.
Yeah, that's all I was really getting to, is that we keep an eye on the situation without any panic involved, and just make a really rational decision as to whether this forthcoming trip would be beneficial in regard to the health crisis that's around us. With that being said, I looked at the two destinations for the music, for the band and orchestra students, and I'm really, really proud to see that they're competing at a very high level. They're competing out of state. One group is going to New Hampshire, the other group is going to Bristol, Connecticut, and I couldn't be happier to see kids in our music program aspiring to such high degrees. But I just wanted to serve up a little bit of caution, they're traveling out of state with a host of other kids from different other school districts, that we vet those situations closely. With that, I yield.
Anything further? Approve all travel requests. Roll call, oh, I got a motion to approve in a second. Roll call, Deb.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Lawrie?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. We have a number of donations tonight also. Motion to accept.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the donations? Hearing none. Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Lawrie?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yep. Mr. Malone?
Yes, from Logan Vangali to Durfee High School, $700. From Dr. Kyle Madeiras from Dutchman Dental to CUS Middle School, $500. From Donors Choose to Henry Lord Community School, $450. From Donors Choose to Henry Lord Community School, $450. From Donors Choose to Henry Lord Community School, $435.99. We thank all of our donors, as always, for their philanthropic support. In particular, I was at the event at CUS, and it was outstanding, and thank you for CUS for hosting us on that day.
Any further? We have a number of contracts to come. Motion to approve with an addendum? Mr. Costa?
My motion, I'd like to reflect, instead of the 10 electrostatic backpack sprayers, high-capacity units, I know the administration's asking for 10, I believe we have one in the district. I'd like to increase that to five additional, so that we have one in each school, so that each of our facilities are covered. So I'd like to make that in the form of an amendment to the motion, to make that, instead of 10, 15.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, Deb.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Lawrie?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Now, a roll call on the other five items. Deb, please call the roll.
I need a second.
Second. We have a second. Mr. Agia, thank you.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Lawrie?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. We have a number of grants tonight. Entertain a motion. Motion to accept.
Second.
Any discussion on the grants, Mr. Agia?
Just had a question on the Safe and Supportive Schools. Grant, it looks like, is this for two schools?
Dr. Dogan?
Thank you, yes, it is. It's a continuation grant. Last year, Green School, as well as Durfee High School, were awarded $10,000 each for a planning grant, and the grant was continued this year for implementation, and it's for the Choose Love program.
So they're going to, each school has $10,000?
Each of those two schools, yes.
The only question I had, just in reading it, was the areas for growth that are in the section that talks about some of the challenges at Durfee, and how that connects to, basically, I guess it's $10,000 in professional development, for the most part?
Yeah, it's.
Or $9,000, whatever it comes out to?
Correct, it's to pay teachers stipends for after-hours work collaborating on, you know, behavioral help and assistance for our students.
But in the, I guess it's a little technical, but there's a comment in the areas for growth, more consistency in interactions needed on the Durfee high-level leadership team, communication with the grade offices and things like that. Do you actually think that this is going to meet that, or is that, is these comments totally separate?
No, it's not going to solve the problem and the issue, but it's going to help us begin to develop the plan that was written last year on better communication, better service delivery for our students. I do have Mr. Woodward here, if you want to hear specifically about what's going on at Durfee.
I'm just curious of how the, the language that is in the grant explaining it doesn't seem to be what the grant purpose, the money's going to be spent for. On the front, it says it's going to be $9,000 in the Choose Love curriculum and some stipends for meetings and the like, but when I read the description, it seemed like there was a bigger issue going on, and I'm just trying to see if those two things connect, in your opinion.
It does. And one of the big components of this is the Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed put out a behavioral health assessment, so the school needed to take that assessment initially, almost like Benchline, and then see where they were at six months later after the grant started last year for action planning, and now it's implementation, and then they will use that tool to reassess. So ours is the Choose Love program, but we also have to use that behavioral assessment from the Department of Ed, so yes, they do complement one another.
Yeah, and there was things in here about year two and three of the duplicating the academy from ninth grade to 10th grade.
Correct, correct.
I don't see all that in the budget for the high school, we just went over that.
No, but when they plan, when they meet after-school hours, those are the kinds of things that they've been talking about. So last year, the recommendation was to implement it in sophomore year, no funding came along with it, but that opportunity was to pay teachers after-school hours to formulate that plan.
Right, I don't disagree with what the plan is, but if you say we were going to try to duplicate it, but there was no funding with the plan, we just came from a budget meeting where we didn't see that, that's the only reason why I ask it, it was fresh in my mind. With that, I yield, thank you.
Anything further on the contracts? Tom?
I just wanted to make a comment, Mr. Chairman, and just speak to my satisfaction that there's been a grant to aid civics education, both in our school district and partnering with Diamond as well, along the eighth-grade lines, which I've seen the program in action. Students are doing research projects that are based to help increase their understanding of what citizenship and responsibility in our country looks like, and I couldn't be happier to see civics reintroduced as a real main idea for students' growth and development in our public schools, and I'm very happy to see that with this grant, that we're partnering with Diamond as well. With that, I yield.
Anything further on grants? Hearing none. Roll call, Deb.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Lawrie?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Committee of the whole, discussion point number one, Dr. Malone, the 2021 school-year instructional calendar.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion on the calendar? Hearing none. Roll call, Deb, please.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Lawrie?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Second item, discussion and vote to approve the school committee meeting calendar for school year.
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, Deb, please.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Lawrie?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Third item on the discussions, Ms. Maria Ponce, applicant for the position of Assistant Superintendent slash Chief Academic Officer for the Fall River Public Schools. Have Ms. Ponce come on down, and we'll talk to the recommended candidate.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion? Mr. Costa?
So I'll just say this, and I'll be brief, and hope I capture everybody's feelings with this, these comments, but if I don't, I'm sure my colleagues will weigh in. I'm 100% in support of your candidacy, Ms. Ponce. The reason that I don't have any formal questions for you is that I think the work that you've done in this district speaks for itself. Over the many years, not just taking on challenging roles in our district, being a building leader, being an instructional leader, not just for the schools that you've been in, but preaching every one of your colleagues, both as teachers, fellow principals, I can't think of a better position within our district to have you in than the one you've been recommended for. I think I speak for the students who've had you as their principal, mine included. I think I speak for parents who've worked with you in those schools. I think I speak for your colleagues throughout this district, that you will bring a unique approach, student-driven, a calming voice, a mentor, someone who understands the challenges that we face here, not just in our schools, but as a city. And so I hope I captured it all. I wish you all the best. I've taken many votes in many years, and this will be one that I take with 100% confidence, and it would be my pleasure. So with that, I yield, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Mr. Corey?
Yeah, I want to echo the vice chairman's comments in regard to Ms. Ponce. I can speak for my wife, a retired teacher who was a colleague of Ms. Ponce many years ago and spoke so highly of her way back then. And in my work throughout the district, I've crossed paths with her so many times, and she's been consistent and respectful and knowledgeable and insightful and hopeful, always. And I'm so pleased that we have a candidate for this high position from within our district. It just makes me really happy that we look at our own here in Fall River and that we can choose such a high-level candidate. And with that, I want to echo the vice chairman's sentiments in saying that I'm very excited to give this a yes vote, and I hope it's a yes vote, and with that, I say, God bless you, Ms. Ponce. Thank you for all your dedication through the years, and I know that you're going to work really, really hard with a sense of focus and centricity for our students and our teachers here in Fall River. Thank you, I yield.
Mr. Hart?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm just going to pretty much piggyback what Vice Chair Costa has said and Mr. Corey has said. And when I was on the school committee, I think maybe four or five years ago, I first met you, and you did, Mr. Costa is right, you took on some very tough positions here in the district and did very well and succeeded in doing that. And I think, you know, like they've said as well, this is an easy, very easy vote for me. I've come to know you, and I think you're a very good person, good-hearted person, a class act. So with that, like I said, this is an easy vote for me, so, and I want to congratulate you very much.
Kevin?
So I do have one question, and I am supportive, and I think I agree with all my colleagues, but this is an opportunity for us to appoint somebody to a key position from internal, well-respected. I appreciate the superintendent's willingness to do this without having a nationwide search when we know we have somebody quality right in front of us, but it is, this is the section on interview, so I personally would just like to hear from you, just briefly, about why you're even interested in this position, and why you and why now? That would be a question that I would ask when people come before us, because I think you need to be able to, and I know you can, it's not a tough question, but why you and why now would be my question.
Well, I'm committed to Fall River Public Schools. I, as you've heard, I've served in many different roles. I've served as a lead principal and have worked closely with my fellow principals. I think that there's nothing more rewarding than the work that we do, and I think that it's time for us to have someone to work closely with our teachers, with our schools, our principals, with, you know, the superintendent, and we're poised- poised for success as a district, and I think that we just need to collectively band together as a team at the Office of Instruction, as principal team, and really support, develop, and grow our teachers so that we can bring our students to where they need to be. I feel like this is my 34th year in education. I feel like I've done K-12. This seems like a logical next step in my career. I'm, I don't want to see our district fail. I'm not saying that I'm the answer and I'm the one who's going to, you know, solve every single problem, but I want to be part of a solution. I think it's very easy for us to be part of, you know, to point out what needs to be done. And there comes a time when we have to roll up our sleeves and say, you know what, put me in. I'm going to do what I need to do and support my fellow principals, everybody in this district, and we're going to move our schools out of Level Four, move our schools to excellence. And I think that, I think I could be part of that.
Very well said. Thank you. You have my full support. Thank you. I yield.
Okay, we'll let everybody go first. Josh, then Mimi.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, following only for a few years, Mrs. Ponce, as a parent, my kids came here to CUS. I met you then, and I look at your resume, it's impressive, and I echo everybody's sentiments. So I'm happy to have you as in this position. Thank you.
Save the best for last, but I'm going to go really quick, I promise. Basically what everybody says, but I absolutely admire your passion for the student, don't look at me, for the students at your schools. Years passed, together we kind of went through something traumatic, and I respect you wholeheartedly, what you do. And I respect that you're putting your hat into a position because you see the bigger picture and where your expertise is needed. And I know it's going to be difficult leaving the weeds, because I know you like being in the weeds and being in the children's life in the schools. But again, I commend, hopefully, what you're going to be doing in the future.
I intend to still be in the schools, but just in a different role.
Just so you know, Maria, you're taking this job at the worst time. You do know that, right? We have plenty of money, we're adding a lot of positions, you're going to get to weave your magic across the district, and the scores have got to go up. You do understand that, right?
Yep. Team effort, team effort.
I mean, if you were up here looking for ways to sharpen pencils at both ends, we'd be in a bad state. But there's a lot of money coming to the district courtesy of the state legislature, and we're going to have to do some things very differently. I think you can do it, but it's just something you inherited, a full boatload of money to try to change instruction across the district, and I know you can do it. And I'm definitely voting for you, so.
Appreciate it.
No problem.
Money's not necessarily the answer, it's how we use it.
It's how you use it, where it's directed.
Right.
And what it does when it gets there. That's the key. And I appreciate it. I entertain the roll call.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hark?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
God bless you, yes.
Ms. Lareve?
100% yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Maria. Number five is a presentation. I guess on extended learning time.
Guess who's giving it?
Maria.
May I add one thing?
Sure.
Before you start with the presentation, I just want to be very clear with people, two things. One, as superintendent, I'm allowed to bring forward recommendations to the committee, and I very appreciate the committee to support the recommendation. I agree with everything that the committee said. This is the time, and this is the place that Maria Ponce assumes command of the Assistant Superintendent position, and I know that the team will be behind her 110% as we are with everything, and I'm very appreciative of that. Two, Principal Ponce will stay as the principal at CUS and complete the year there. I want to be very clear with the parents and the students and the faculty and staff at CUS that she will stay and complete that assignment. We will post that job, we'll put a search team together, as we do with jobs like that, and we'll be appointing a principal after a search involving faculty, staff, and parents, as we've done in the past. So I want to thank Maria Nodden for your willingness to step forward, but really for also being a role model, that you've done this hard work in this system, and you've demonstrated success in three buildings. So what better place than now to help support your colleagues, the students that we serve, our professional faculty and staff by taking that work and taking it to scale across the whole district. So with that, I'm happy to have you as a partner in this work, and I'm looking forward to being the yin and the yang to each other's expertise. So thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Ms. Ponce.
All right. So actually, I'm starting kicking off the presentation, but behind me, you see the ELT committee, which is really comprised of 18 stakeholders. Our, we put a committee together, and I apologize because we had a PowerPoint, but there's no internet, so we're going to do it old-school with our, working with our hard copies. But our objective was to gather information from all the stakeholders, from the ELT schools, so that we could look at different models, explore some considerations for future planning, right? And back in December of 2018, Dr. Malone tasked me with chairing this ELT committee in, so that we can gather information. On January 22nd, I believe, was our first meeting. We've been meeting for the year, gathering all sorts of data, and now it's time for us to turn that information over, to hand it over to you. So the ELT committee was comprised of principals, of stakeholders from all over, teachers, principals, different kinds of administrators, as well as central office people, and everyone, so that we could have every voice represented. Part of our work was, we were charged with gathering information. We reviewed existing ELT models. You're going to be able to see that we have four different models in the district. We did a financial review to look at, did a cost analysis to see. So we have different kinds of funding sources for our ELTs, current ELTs. Human resources looked at ELT from the teacher retention, recruitment-retention perspective. We looked at student achievement to gauge impact, student attendance. We did a research review, we did parent surveys, student surveys, teacher surveys. We wanted to get everyone's perspective, a sampling of everyone, so that we can give some good information for decision-making. So we, what we learned, I mean, many of us are entrenched in ELT in one way or another, but we learned that ELT across the district is used in many different ways. We use ELT for interventions, for academic support. We use it for social-emotional support, interventions for that, such as some schools added time for morning meeting, right, to set their day. ELT is used for social learning groups, early release time where we do professional development. We also use it for enrichment opportunities. Kids get, kids have opportunities to engage in cooking, for instance, yoga. That's all because they have extra time, right? Extended core time, so in some instances, you'll see that actually ELT is used differently, middle level as opposed to the elementary level. So in the elementary level, they extend the time for English, math, science, et cetera. And we use, many schools use it for teacher collaboration. For instance, at CUS, we use, we release one day so that we can have professional development every single week. So teachers can work together as grade-level teams or academic teams, et cetera. So in your PowerPoint that you have there, your hard copy, you'll notice that we have four different models within our district. We have three traditional schools. ELT actually started in '06, where CUS jumped in, then Sylvia, and then Viveris. They're 90-minute models. That's the Extended Learning Time Grant. That's a fixed, it's not a fixed grant, but it's a grant where, that's a state grant. We were tasked with adding 300 additional hours for extra time on learning. Then you have Morton and Leterno, who have 60-minute model, and theirs is through a different kind of grant. You're also going to look, see that Doran and Talbot, both, Talbot actually jumped in this year, and Doran is down to 30 minutes. They originally, it was part of, it was used as a strategy for turnaround when I was there in '09, and we added an hour. And then it was, due to funding, it was reduced to 30 minutes, and they're currently at 30 minutes, as is Talbot. Fonsica started with 30 minutes and then is now down to 20 minutes. And then we have nine schools that have no additional time. And what you have here is, you also have a timeline that shows you the different models and when they came on board as far as years. I'm going to turn over this now to Mr. Agia, or Mr. Almeida, who's going to walk you through the budget piece, and then everybody's going to have a piece of the work that we did, because this work, this committee worked really hard on this.
Good evening. So currently, we have eight schools that have ELT, Fonsica, Doran, Talbot, Morton, Leterno, Sylvia, CUS, and Viveris. And so the cost, the cost to run the ELT program across the district for each school with all the different models is about $4.3 million, of which, next year, we're looking at funding $741,000. Of note, the Fonsica School, the redesign grant, sunset's next year, I'm sorry, on June 30th, so we will be funding the 20 minutes in the operating budget. But as it stands, we have, we have a couple of grants. The grant for Morton and the grant for Leterno, that currently we are not able to sustain the full grant, so we have to fund a portion of those two grants currently through the operating budget. But with that, so with that said, this assumes the ELT grant is funded through the state next year. That's roughly $3 million. But so in total, it is $4.2 million for the whole program, and we have two grants that are split-funded for Morton and, sorry, Morton and Leterno. And we have the Sylvia, CUS, and Viveris that's funded through the ELT grant. And the Fonsica and Doran for next year will be fully funded through the operating budget. So with that, I'll turn it over to Keith.
Good evening. I'm Keith Michon from CUS Middle School, a teacher there. So our aim, we surveyed teachers in the spring of 2019, and our aim was to identify the overall view of ELT, also the best use of time, and what potential turnover there may be in the upcoming years. And the teachers reported out that 83% think it's very important or somewhat important overall. When we broke down those categories, we broke it down into academic achievement, emotional growth, social-emotional growth, and school culture. And what we see there, some of those things are difficult to measure in some of our data, but through survey, we identified core academic time and content intervention as a need in all areas. In terms of turnover, 28% of the teachers, the ELT teachers, reported they may opt out in the next three years, which is maybe a little high. But on the other side, 51% of non-ELT teachers reported that they may be interested in working in those schools. So it looks like it's good for some, or good for many, maybe not all. Thank you.
Hello. We also surveyed parents in this, on this committee, and out of the families that were surveyed, 813 replied. It was pretty evenly split, with half of those respondents being from ELT schools and the other half being from a standard-day school. Approximately 60% of the families, whether they were ELT or standard-day, seemed to be content with the amount of time that their child was going to school. The options for school hours, so we gave them the option of which ELT model would fit your family best, seven hours, seven and a half hours, eight hours, and the responses were pretty evenly split. Also worth mentioning is 42% of the parents said that they would, that wanted their children to go to an ELT school, so that they would benefit from the academics, extra academic support that their child could receive at an ELT school.
We also wanted student voice to be heard, so we felt the best way to do that was to establish some student focus groups at each of the ELT schools. The focus groups were comprised of students who had represented various subgroups within the schools and also varying lengths of time within ELT. And we asked them questions focused on academic support, enrichment, and the impact that ELT had on their home lives and extracurricular activities.
Okay, when asked how ELT impacted their family life, most of the students responded that extended learning time negatively affects their life outside of school. Those students felt that ELT meant that they have less time with their families, to spend with their families, and the longer day particularly challenging for the students who participate in extracurricular activities.
In terms of the electives and the extracurricular piece, as Maria pointed out earlier, it's done differently in different models of ELT. So some schools have additional time embedded in their core, and the enrichment pieces are embedded that way, while in other schools there's a separate block for enrichment. So students had different things to say about that. Generally, though, they could agree on, they all wanted more time for movement and socialization. They all spoke about ELT supporting their interest in things like cooking, the arts, and STEM.
And regarding academic support, when they asked, they were asked to speak about that, overall, students expressed that having additional time factored into the day provided additional time for them to work on particular skills. The extended learning time provides students more occasions to work in small groups, as opposed to always whole group in the classroom, and have extra time to receive instruction and complete tasks. And students also conveyed that additional time in the school day generates more time to receive extra academic support as needed.
The final question that we had for students, which was a little bit difficult for them to answer, but we asked them what their ideal school day would be. Most of the students agreed across the board that a shortened school day would be their preference. However, there was a lot of variability in what kids described as the ideal school day.
The next thing that we took a look at from 2012 through 2019 was student achievement in ELA and mathematics, and then the overall percentile rankings of ELT versus non-ELT schools. On the first slide that speaks to student achievement, we have English Language Arts, 2012 through 2016, and then split with 2017, 19, because that's when the test changed. And what you can see is that 2012 through 2016, we see a general increase in the performance of all of our ELT schools. It's not, you know, a steady incline across the board, but when you look from left to right, you can see this, you know, this more general increase for all the school. One of the things that we noted was Watson's gain. And in the year that it, in the years that it was implementing ELT, Watson saw an 18-point gain in ELA. And same thing in, Doran has a 17-point gain in terms of the ELT schools, 13-point increase for Viveris. When we look at the non-ELT schools, we don't see the general trend from 2012 to 2016, but we did have schools make significant increases from 2015 to 2016. And there, we highlighted Henry Lord, as well as Spencer Borden. From 2017 to 2019, once the new test was implemented, in general, when you look at the ELT schools and the non-ELT schools, we don't see that incline. So we're not seeing a steady progression, an increase for students, whether they're ELT or non-ELT schools. The exception to that from 2017 to 2019 is Doran. It is an ELT school, but we're not looking at, you know, cause and effect, just maybe some kind of correlations here in this data. The next piece that we looked at was math. And again, from 2012 to 2016, we see a general increase. There are ups and downs during that time period for our ELT schools, but certainly from left to right, as you're looking. from left to right as you're looking, we see that general increase in the percent of students who were proficient or advanced. And we definitely see the biggest gains for some of our ELT schools. We highlighted there a twenty-two point gain for Viveras as well as Morton with a twenty-three point gain from two thousand twelve to two thousand fifteen. Watson actually added, again, Watson added ELT during the timeframe and then it was later dropped and during the time when they implemented ELT, they had shown a seven point increase through two thousand fifteen and then a nineteen point increase through two thousand nineteen. So non-ELT schools during that time, you still see a general increase. There were definitely noticeable gains there for Spencer Borden and Tanzi. From two thousand seventeen to two thousand nineteen, we don't see an overall gain left to right. Okay, so again, with the new test, we're not seeing steady increases across schools, whether they're ELT schools or non-ELT schools. We do see exceptions both for ELT and non-ELT schools, Doran being the exception for our ELT schools and Henry Lord as an exception for the non-ELT schools. Both of those made pretty significant gains during, during that time period. And then the last piece that we looked at for ELT versus non-ELT schools, first from two thousand twelve to two thousand sixteen, under the, the old accountability system, was the percentile, the percentile rankings of schools. And in both ELT and non-ELT schools, we see a general increase during that time period. Overall in the district, we were seeing our schools kind of make gains when compared to other schools in the state. Our biggest movers were certainly ELT schools. Viveras jumped thirty-seven points, Doran thirty-one points. And then we look though at non-ELT schools like Tanzi that made a twenty-four point jump during that time period. One thing that we definitely wanted to note was Leterno. Leterno in one year made a fourteen point jump in percentile and that was in two thousand sixteen, which was its first year of ELT. And then finally, most recently, two thousand eighteen to two thousand nineteen, what we're seeing in our ELT schools and our non-ELT schools is schools pretty much staying the same from two thousand eighteen to two thousand nineteen, not a lot of movement. One thing that we saw, you know, just one of our ELT schools made a significant decrease in terms of their percentile. One of our non-ELT schools made a significant one-year increase in percentile. So when we look at kind of the net gains, we see our ELT schools actually had overall a three-point decrease in their average percentile and non-ELT schools, a one point, a one-point increase on average. But really, when you look at those graphs, you can see there just wasn't that much movement in a very small number of schools that made either large increases or decreases, really made a difference when you looked at the average across those groups.
The last piece for us to address here this evening is the impact on teacher retention. And although there is a number of data points that could be considered within that, there is no definitive real reason that comes out of that in terms of teacher retention. Obviously, there are a number of factors that can be impacted by that, one being the leadership at the school. If a school is embedded in the work and they're following, you know, a, a, a strong model, that obviously has an impact on a teacher's ability to want to stay and continue that work. Financial considerations aside, obviously, in some cases, the, the amount of money that can be earned in, for the additional time by the teachers is a significant factor. But as we've seen in several of the recent years, the teacher retention has begun to slip just a little bit in some of those schools and I would attribute that more to retirement factors in, in those seven schools that are involved in the ELT program. So I would say at this point that the retention, although it does assist, because in the first four of the, of the years that are, are looked at in retention, you'll see that a number of the schools exceed the teacher's retention rate for the district in the last two years. It's been somewhat of a mixed bag in terms of the retention data.
Good evening. The next part of the presentation that we wanted to share was we did take a brief snapshot of some student attendance data. So we just looked at two years of attendance just to get a little bit of a overview and some of the highlights from that, as you see in your report, is that seventy-one percent of the ELT schools between two thousand and eighteen and two thousand nineteen exceeded their accountability targets and those are for the ELT schools, whereas only thirty-three percent of non-ELT schools exceeded their two thousand nineteen targets. Of note also is that seventeen percent of the non-ELT schools showed no change or improved below target and fifty percent of non-ELT schools showed an increase in the percentage of chronically absent students. But again, that's a small snapshot just from two years. We also did a little bit of a review of the current state of the research regarding extended day learning on a variety of models, both extended day, extended year, extended hours. There's much more information in your report, but just a couple of highlights is that the research really shows that just adding more time does not necessarily lead to improved outcomes, that it's very important that, that time is used very intentionally, whatever the model be, whether it's summer or longer school days. But it does say that if you're very intentional and planful about that extended time, that that can lead to improved results for students. So as we think a little bit about just wrapping up and some of our sort of points to ponder, one of the things that we wanted to just bring up that the committee discussed at length was around how do we provide that equitable access for all students in Fall River Public Schools to the benefits of extended learning time? So as you've seen, we have some schools that have a variety of extended learning time models, some that are just the standard school day. One thing we tossed around a little bit for consideration is do we look at having a uniform, for example, thirty minutes for all schools of extended time? And then those schools that perhaps that are in turnaround or below expectations, maybe for a temporary or brief period of time, would have a longer school day than that thirty minutes, yet each school would have some access to those extended learning time opportunities with a minimum of thirty minutes. Then of course, to consider what's on everyone's mind is just the sustainability of programming if some of the grant funding were to go away. It's a conversation each spring and it's one that we're having now. So as a group, looking forward to what is the sustainability of the ELT model in all of its various forms? And if there is a single model that's adopted across schools, so let's say we went with a thirty-minute model or a sixty-minute model, what would that do for teacher recruitment and retention? As you know, a lot of students and families, as we saw from our surveys, build their professional and personal lives around an ELT schedule. So what movement might happen both with students and staff if we were to shift the current model? And then lastly, so what other factors outside of the extended learning time sort of might attribute for some of the student achievement, some of the student gains and perhaps some of the student decreases? So there's been changes in leadership at all of our schools, ELT and non-ELT. There's been staff turnover, of course, at each of our schools and there's been an increase or a decrease in different special populations at different schools across the district. So as much as we were hoping to sort of find that one thing that led to, you know, improving student success through the ELT model, consistently kind of recognize there's a lot of factors at play. So while we think our initial report is pretty robust, we know there is definitely more work that needs to be done. And so our recommendation as a committee at this point would be to refer the study and the work to the instructional subcommittee. This committee will continue to be at the disposal of the instructional subcommittee for further questions and of course, for the work that needs to be done with our community to further flesh out this conversation. With that, I'll open things up to questions.
Motion to refer.
Second. Any questions? Kev?
Yeah, so thank you for the presentation. The, I think the last page that you just read about points to ponder spells it out pretty clearly that that's where we're at and what are we going to do with it? My personal belief is we're no longer going to be able to fund ELT in Massachusetts, in Fall River, Massachusetts, like we have before. That's just a fact. So I think that's the overriding piece for me is to decide what are we going to do? We know it's not going to be the same going forward for the next several years. So we can continue to just keep doing the same thing that we're doing, which I think there's some pockets of good results and not, and you articulated that very well. But the sustainability of the programming, if this grant doesn't stay, it's un, it's unattainable. We just sat in a room where there's a whole list of budget items that are on Plan B for people. If we had to fund four million dollars or three million dollars, all those nice things that we just talked about doing are gone. And I think we just need to be, whether we refer this or not, we have to understand that the time is coming, that we have to do this differently. There's just no financial way around it. And to me, that's the overriding piece. I personally would like the, the last statement about having it equitable across the whole, all of the schools. I think that's a major piece for something that I would support in the future, that come up with a model that works with all the players and each school should be able to get it. We shouldn't have schools, well, if you're in this school, you have this, and if you're in that school, we should have equality across all of the schools, in my, my opinion. I know we can't do that in one year, but just those are my two points that we, we definitely don't have the money to continue doing it like. And if you talk to anybody in the legislature, they've given us a lot of money to do different things, but along the way, they're also not going to be giving us this ELT grant like they have all the years too. So we have to be cognizant of that. So those are my points and I look forward to the subcommittee. With that, Ayl.
Mr. Corey.
Yeah, so I see that eight schools are affected, but there are four different ELT models. There's a ninety-minute model, a sixty-minute model, a thirty-minute model and a twenty-minute model. So I just wonder what the overall results look like comparatively between all those models. I know that after listening to a few parents in the district, that the ninety-minute model, to me, that's, that's a long time extra for ELT. I think that model was devised when CUS went underperforming many years ago and Ed Reform deemed it necessary to create the ELT model there. And then there was a whole jump with teachers, like they want to go to work at that school because they know they're going to make extra money. So there are some questions that I have around all of that modeling, you know, that I would like to take up a little bit more deeply. I'm on the instructional subcommittee, so I look forward to having a deeper conversation with you all around those points. And one of the things that I've been talking to with some of my colleagues, also in the school department, is, is the time on lunch. It seems like even with ELT schools, even with the ninety-minute model, the lunch break is really short. And I just wonder how much pressure that puts on kids, you know, to try to like rush their day along to get to the next scheduled assignment. And I'm just wondering if we can look at that, when we have ELT, can we also look at maybe a more legitimate time for lunch, maybe along those lines? I don't know if the answer's in there, but those are the points I'd like to explore moving forward. With that, Ayl, Mr. Chairman.
Me? Nothing. Mr. Hudson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So a few questions, not sure if it's for the committee or the superintendent. I guess the first question would be Watson seemed to do all right when they had that extended day. So is there any chance of us bringing that back? I wasn't, I couldn't remember if we put that in the budget or not, it's something to consider.
It's not in the budget. Three years ago, the Watson faculty and staff made a decision to cut the time to keep the people when the grant faded and I supported that and that's the way it's been. However, I am encouraged about discussions moving forward about finding something in lines with what Mr. Aguirre stated around a way that we can have time added in a cost-effective manner. But the outright cost of extending the day, if the money was there, I would definitely entertain it. It can't be mandated because they're no longer in the same category, but it's something I'd be looking forward to talking about with the faculty and staff and leadership there.
Right. So, and it's something to be great in the future. I mean, Watson seems to show some really great results when they have the ELT there, so something to think about. Another question I had, some of the ELT schools, while others were kind of improving, there were a few that were not improving, in fact, they were declining. So were we, were we able to identify maybe the reasons why? Did they change something? Did they start doing something differently?
I think that we need to look at CUS, for instance, right? If you look at their data, there was change in leadership. I think there are many factors that impact student achievement, just like just giving people ninety minutes is, extra time is not the end-all and be-all. It's not going to guarantee student success. Giving everybody an extra million dollars, it's not going to guarantee. So I think that we have to look at all the factors we need to look deeply at. So if we're going to, at the instructional subcommittee, if we're asked to look deeply at the schools that are ELT and let's look at some of the variables that may have impacted that decline or that stall, because I wouldn't say in some schools, there's, there's been a stall, right? To figure out exactly what it is, because I, I think that we're probably going to find more factors that account for, for that stall.
Right. A few more comments. Someone mentioned more recess, more breaks and my colleague mentioned the longer lunch. So I think especially at some of the longer schools where you have like an eight-hour and fifteen-minute day, that's a really long day and I think that's something that could squeeze that in there. It might help on that social, emotional aspect where kids, you know, they can...
I think that the misconception is everybody thinks just because we have ninety additional minutes, we can use them for things such as that. We have an ELT agreement and we have to use for time on learning and teacher collaboration. So if we extend, or if we give kids recess or we extend lunch, that time's going to come from something because we have to account for all of our minutes that kids are in front of teachers and there, there's teaching and learning going on.
Right. So I have a, a few more comments, but do you want to...
I was going to, may I? Go ahead. The ninety-minute schools, it's, how do I say this? I don't want to use the term mandated, but it's, it's managed by the Department of Ed in terms of exactly how it has to look. We have more flexibility in the other schools that we do. So I'm hopeful that as this conversation engages and we think about what this could look like over time, going to scale with a common package, we could include the things like the additional recess, additional planning time, those kinds of things, but it's, it's rigidly standardized by the department. Principal Ponce is absolutely correct there. They, we don't have the, because then you, the grant, when it rigidly came out mandates exactly how the time has to be spent is what I'm getting at.
Right. So those, those are the three schools.
And those three schools, yes.
Right. So those grants, are they going to disappear? Is that something that we're anticipating?
Great question. So they were not funded in House Two, the governor's budget, but we're waiting to see what House Ways and Means done and then the Senate. Each year, this is a back and forth. So those three specific schools, which would be Sylvia, Cusson, Viveras, right now, that extended learning time money is not part of the state budget.
Right. So at some point, we might have to pick, so I'm assuming it's the legislature's looking at that saying with all the SOA money, districts should be able to pick up the cost of the ELT potentially, if that's deadline.
Yes, but I, I do want to just caution, we're talking close to three million dollars on that one, but just those three schools.
I understand.
So that's the dilemma, right? If, if that money were to go away, as a district, we would have to decide whether we're going to take three million dollars of that money to fund three schools or are we going to create a model where we bring equity to all schools? That's a question that the committee needs to deliberate with.
Sure. Sounds great.
And we do not know yet, so how, if, even if the line item is sunsetted in the state budget, we don't know from the department yet if they will fund that out of some other means. So all that will be debated over the next few months and I'll share information as we get it.
Thank you. Thank you, Ayl.
Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I'll just make a point about if that money sunsets, then I think the department loses its leverage mandating it. If they want to be a partner, then we can look at that, but I think if they're expecting districts to come up with three million dollars for a mandate they won't fund, I think that's wholly unfair. And I'm not so convinced that ninety minutes is the answer. Looking at the data that's been provided, let me just say that thank you, because I think this is a great source of information, at least to start with. But I've, I've heard from, from parents too, that ninety minutes for some of those students is just too long, depending on their age too. Those, those kids are in school from sunup to sundown. And then you look at the data that's been presented about students and how that impacts their ability to do extracurricular activities, spend time with families, it's having an impact. And I'm not so sure that the data is clear that just by simply extending the time, and I think you cited in the back of the report, just extending the day... just extending the day isn't going to necessarily equate to higher achievement. The question becomes, how do we get to that balance, where it's equitable for all, and that we focus more on the fidelity of the time we're using as opposed to just extending it? And so there's some things that I think that I'm going to, as the Chair of the Instructional Subcommittee, rely on you folks to keep digging and dive deeper into that information. So I guess what I would say is, Ms. Ponce mentioned about the variables. If you can take a look at that between now and the time the subcommittee meets to talk about, what are those variables? And do they really impact student achievement or not? The other piece is, I found it telling when you interviewed or surveyed parents. Have we broken that down or disaggregated each of the schools? And so are those parents that are saying that, you know, 50% are saying 6.5 hours is sufficient, some of them are saying it's too long? Are those the parents that are coming from schools that are at 90 minutes now? Do we know that information?
The only, the only parents that responded that we know which schools were responding...
And they were about 50/50, right? So 50% ELT, 50 non-percent. But of the 50% of ELT parents, have we disaggregated that? Do we know how many parents were satisfied with a seven-hour day, a seven and a half?
Approximately 60%.
So if we could, right, so 68%, and then 31% looks like, I mean, 68% were either keep it at six and a half or seven. 31% were seven and a half or eight. I'm just curious, what responses were coming from those particular schools? Because if we're looking at families, and the next piece of that would be teachers, what is the optimal time to extend a day? 90 minutes may be too long, 20 minutes may not be enough. But if we can get to a balance where educators and parents feel strongly that, yes, 60 minutes, it seems like it may be optimal, then we can look at how we do that equitably across the district.
The problem with looking at the data that way was most of the respondents, it wasn't equally dispersed among the different models.
Right. Okay. So that's fair. So you wouldn't necessarily be able to determine what parents were in each particular school wanted, either extend it or reduce it? Okay.
For example, I believe Sylvia was the highest response, so they had like the most responses at every school. So you can't really, you know...
Right, because they got one of the, they're one of the three schools with the longest day.
But I think we can pull it apart by school, and when we have the Instructional Subcommittee, then possibly bring that data to you.
Because I want to strike a balance between what teachers feel like is sufficient in the course of a school day to capture the fidelity that we're talking about, the good programming that we want going on, and also families about what they're willing to continue to, I don't say tolerate, but have their students be a part of, because that is a big concern. It's such a long day, they're seeing, you know, maybe behaviors at home as a result of students feeling like they're completely burned out by Thursday afternoon, you know, when they're coming home. And so if we can take a look at some of that stuff, I'd like to strike a chord that's equitable across the district, financially feasible, particularly since I don't know that we're going to get the funding we need to keep on pace with 90 minutes, and whether or not we can strike a balance with parents and teachers, what that looks like. If we can, you know, rally the committee to sort of look at that, I think that's a good starting point for the initial discussion, and maybe we need to continue to dig a little deeper. But thank you for the report. I think it's a great starting point, shares a lot of information. I think we think extended learning time equates to more time in a classroom, so because of that, there must be more learning going on. And the data you provided is sort of a mixed bag, it doesn't really show that necessarily. So I'm interested in those variables and how they may play in. But for tonight's purposes, since it's going to go to Instructional, I'll yield. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hart?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just had a few questions. I wanted to know, since we're talking about the different models and the 90-minute, 60-minute models, and I don't see it in here, and it may have been brought up, but do we know if the 90-minute models helped with the scores? Did it bring up the scores, or did it, was the 30-minute, what was the best 90-minute model? Did the scores of these schools increase?
I think that if you look at your data, Tracy, Dr. Curley pointed out that from 2012 to 2016, the schools were on, there was an upward trajectory. And what we did was we looked at all the different schools and their models, right? So if you look at Sylvia, Viveras, and CUS data, you can see their data with 90 minutes. And then if you look at, you know, a school that only has, a Morton that only has one hour, 60 minutes, and look at their date and see where they were. I think that it was after 20, after the test changed, you're seeing, you know, a stall in some schools. So we need to look at the different variables and see, why do we have a stall? You know, we can't attribute student achievement, we can't pin it solely on 90 minutes, 60 minutes, 30 minutes.
But what do you prefer as a group? What did you come up with as, what's better? Is it 90 minutes, 60 minutes?
That's the million-dollar question. I think that this group wasn't charged with coming up with a sweet spot, if you will, and say, okay, we're going to, we think 30 minutes is the... We don't really have the power to say, we can, you know, as a district, we think 30 minutes is equitable. I think we have to look at it and look at where our schools are and say, how do we give all of our kids? We looked at what ELT does for our schools, how do we give all of our kids access of some sort? And what can we do as a district that we can manage, right? Because we have different funding sources for the different models that are before you.
Okay. That's fine. But also too, the attendance data I looked at, and it looks like 13 schools, seven improved their attendance. But where did we get the, you know, the exceeded goals? I think I can see a four points increase. Where, who made up those numbers? Where did we get, was it TESI numbers?
Yes, those are the accountability measures.
Yeah, so each school, at the end of each school year, set a new target. So based, for example, based on our 2019 attendance data from last year, each school now has a 2020 target that the state sets for us. And so the data that we showed, that I referenced earlier about meeting 71% of ELT schools exceeded their targets, that means they went above and beyond what the DESI set for their chronic absenteeism rates.
Okay.
And each year that gets reset.
Okay. And you talked about the parents' perspective and the surveys that were sent out. How many surveys were sent out?
We sent, we did a parent survey, a teacher survey, and a student, we surveyed students.
But how many parent surveys?
Well, we sent it out to all parents. We got 800 and some parents that responded.
813.
All right. The other thing too, I just wanted to, with Kevin, with the FY21 budget overview. And Kevin, you talked about the operating budget is going to be at 741,000 funded?
Yes.
And also the grants consist of about 3.7? Now, that is, pretty much goes towards salaries, correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right. That's all I needed to confirm. All right, Ayl, thank you. Anything further?
Role call, Deb, on the motion to refer to the Instructional Subcommittee?
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Lawrie?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Discussion item number six on the GATE program, as presented by Dr. Matthew Malone, Superintendent of Schools.
So the purpose of this item is, we presented our GATE program presentation to the committee, and in that, we talked about moving in a direction that's different than we're currently operating. And I need direction from the committee, so I'm requesting that we refer this to also the Instructional Subcommittee for further discussion, looking at options for the GATE program moving forward into the next few fiscal years.
Motion to refer.
I think it's already there.
I believe, I was going to say, I'll make the motion, but I believe with prior meeting, we referred it there.
It was on the agenda, we couldn't get to it, so it's already there.
It was tabled.
Yes.
So I'm just asking for, and I've provided more information.
Motion to lift off the table and refer to Instructional Subcommittee.
Second. Role call, Deb?
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Lawrie?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Discussion item number seven on the Student Opportunity Act.
So Student Opportunity Act requires that we do intensive community engagement, which we've done. We thank our partners from the FRA for hosting a community event. Then we've done several parent events with the CPAC and the LPAC. We have worked then to establish a plan based on what the Department of Ed requires. That plan is now being reviewed in several quarters, one of which is each school is working with their site council to review, provide more feedback. I have it here for feedback of members of the committee still. We're seeking input widely again as we move forward, but we've heard the same information has now begun to overlap. So we know what people's interests are. Our Student Opportunity Act plan is a three-year plan, and we know that there's seven years of funding coming. So if we think long-term, the strategy in this plan is to get small beachheads of investments in year one on things that we will continue into much more deeper investments as we go on, which could include things like extended time, et cetera. But we feel that this plan meets the needs of all constituents, meets the needs of students most importantly, and is in line with the department. I'd be, I'm going to be requesting, per the law, a special meeting in the Subcommittee is, this has to be submitted by April 1st, and the committee will need to vote on the plan when the drafts get more information and we refine it, and we narrow the plan down to roughly eight pages. Right now, it's about 12, it's going to be eight, as required by the department. So with that, I'm leaving it here, and we look forward to more discussion.
Mr. Hudson?
So once we submit this plan, this plan is a seven-year plan?
No, this plan's a three-year plan.
So, okay, so the question I have is, can, after year one we've submitted it, we recognize that we want to change something? Are we able to change it in that three-year period?
My understanding is that there'll be each year an update that will be required to submit to the department. The department is being very human, I think, about this. I think the new commissioner is, having been in the field, understands how plans fluctuate. So we also know that the funding in year one, it was just the first year of funding, and we expect that it will increase substantially or exponentially over the next few years. So we know that the plans are living documents. I think the department knows that, and that's what they require.
Thank you. Ayl.
Deb?
Just briefly, the, I think the next line is the budget. So this is actually due before we're going to finish our budget, so when I was just looking through it, there's positions in there that may change, so that would be my only concern, is what are we going to do?
Okay. Great question, and I'm responding that the department understands that, and they know, and that's why I think it's a living document. And we probably each year be required to do end-of-year based on what we said in this plan, because it's, the law says it's due in April, and we know our final budget won't be known until the end of June. So there will be things that will change. I think everyone's clear about that. And all indications from the department are that they'll be open to changes and work with us. And if I say, by voting on the plan in a special meeting, in no way is the committee voting on the budget, the final budget. That, of course, happens later in the year. This is just the intent of what we expect to do under the law based on the additional money. So each dollar has to be specifically tied to some key investments, 17, of which there are 17 that the department has had us look at, and we feel strongly that our first-year plan does a good job of getting on the board in several of those areas, high-leverage areas, particularly around student attendance, particularly around early childhood, particularly around moving the needle around student achievement with curriculum investments and those types of things, teacher retention, teacher recruitment, those kinds of things. And direct services. I mean, the good news, and I'll say this again in the next agenda item, but our entire focus is about direct services for kids, and how do we continue to ensure that we have direct services in schools working with kids? And that's what we're supporting and proposing to the committee in their budget deliberations.
Tom?
Yeah, so in response to the presentation that just preceded us on ELT and talking about equitable asset access, I see that there's a relationship between higher achievement and direct services that we're now going to be able to apply due to the Student Opportunity Act. We just, we're in the budget review process now with all the schools, and they've presented their wish lists, and there's a lot of positions that we're working to fortify in order to assure higher student achievement as we move forward. So I'm really hoping that this helps to level the playing field a little bit as we move forward, and maybe answer some of the dilemma or the inquiry as to how do we work with ELT, the ELT model, moving forward. So maybe we'll find the answers with all of that, with that I yield.
Okay, that was only a discussion. Item number eight, update and discussion on the FY21 budget, as presented by Dr. Malone.
So we're in the midst of our budget hearings with the committee, finance committees. I believe we've done all sites as of today. We'll now move into departments, continue the dialogue. We have a rich list, a rich discussion of needs, and I look forward to continued discussion with the committee as we go through the process.
Thank you, Dr. Malone. Item number nine, discussion and vote to approve a statement of interest for the former Stone School on Globe Street, as referred by the Facilities and Operations Subcommittee, and presented by Ken Pacico, Chief Operating Officer.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion on the item? Mr. Corey?
I'm just really happy to see this on the agenda, Mr. Chairman. We're talking about trends in education, and just today, on local radio, the president of the Local Chamber of Commerce came on and spoke about the summit that's about to happen, Early Education Summit at Bristol Community College on Friday, March 20th, headed by Joanne Spreger from our children's museum. And there's a real motivation right now to look at the benefits of four-year-olds being enrolled in school-wide programs. And this is not only a movement within school departments or state government, but it's also a movement amongst the business community in Massachusetts as the different chambers of commerce are looking at the importance of student achievement and what it's going to mean for the future jobs market in the 21st century. They see a direct link to student achievement and future jobs. And that's how important this discussion is on early childhood education and pre-K. And for us to be looking at our variables through repurposing this site of the former Stone School, applaud those efforts. Just wanted to get that perspective out there in the air. Thank you. With that, I yield.
Anything further? Motion's made, second role call.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Lawrie?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Item number 10 is a discussion and vote to approve on the traffic issue at the Henry Lloyd Community School, as referred by the Facilities and Operations Subcommittee.
So, Mr. Chairman?
Second. Any discussion? Role call, Deb?
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Lawrie?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Item number 11 is a discussion and vote to approve the drainage issue at the Talbot Middle School, as referred by the Facilities and Operations Subcommittee, and presented by Ken Pacico.
Motion to approve.
Second. Second, discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Can we hear from Mr. Pacico?
Yeah. Hold on. Mr. Costa?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Pacico, I just want to give you an opportunity, because there's quite a bit of work that needs to get done down at the table, excuse me, down at the Talbot, including the drainage. And so maybe you can, I know we talked specifically about the drainage issue, but I know there's other work that's pending. You know, certainly, I think, to the extent the committee's able to, with the funds that I think we're still anticipating will come from the city for health care and I think other assessments, to the extent that we can assist in that process, I think it makes good sense to do so. But if you can, if you can just sort of update for the public what we're talking about, not only about the drainage, but the other work that's necessary down there. And I'm hoping maybe you can give the committee a sense of when and if you'll have a proposal coming back to us regarding the other work.
So the drainage portion of the Talbot work would be swales, new fixtures in parking lot areas. There's a head wall that would need... There's a head wall that would need some work that takes that water into the, into the highway area and then across into Southwood Talbot. So, that work is what we're basically talking about to start this project. And in that area, the ledge formation is causing the flooding at Talbot, and then the drainage structures there are just not large enough. So it's a combination of city work that will be done through Sewer Commission, and then work that would have to be done on our property that would feed this drainage work done by the city. That's the first part of phase one of the project, and then the second phase would be to repave the structures, the parking areas there, and also sidewalks curbing to renew the outside of that property. So it's kind of two-phase worth in the vicinity of about $400,000 total. We would be ready, we could have construction documents ready, to put this out to bid by July 1st.
So this proposal's just drainage? The other piece of the puzzle?
This piece is, yeah, this would, so the drainage is the first piece of it. The $400,000 is not all drainage. Some of that is also the parking improvements.
Right. And has the process begun with respect to phase two of this, or the sidewalks paving of the parking lot?
So, so none of that stuff is, we haven't moved that part forward. We need to get the drainage work done, but we would like to have it as a combination. So, economy of scale, we may be able to have both projects running simultaneously, which would be advantageous to us.
So, one isn't independent of the other in terms of the project? You can do the drainage, obviously that's the first thing you need to do, then you can worry about the sidewalks and the paving, but have you able, have you been able to assess the cost associated with the sidewalks and the paving?
So.
And that's, the reason I bring that up is that I mentioned that to the extent we can, with this year's funding, if we're going to do the drainage, then I just assume the committee keep on its radar screen for however the committee decides to spend some of those funds. If it chooses to spend it on the second piece of this project, like you said, for purposes of economy, you're going to have those, that work happening, you're going to have contractors down there.
Right.
To the extent we can get a price as to what it would cost to do the second piece of it while they're already there, as opposed to putting that off and having them come back and have to rebid and redeploy.
So the whole project's $475, more or less. We're going to, we're going to be looking at $75,000 to do the drainage work, and again, the pavement, curbing, sidewalk work could be done simultaneously, same contractor, if those bids come in where we think they're going to come in.
I yield. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Kev?
So several years ago, I want to say it was when I first got back on this committee, you had mentioned getting the gas lines sent down there so that we could get rid of the electric heat and something in combination with the neighborhood, with Diamond Regional. Is that dead? Is that a?
So, Diamond, obviously, everyone is aware that they are in a feasibility study right now for a new building, and part of that feasibility study is bringing a high-pressure gas service to that building in cooperation with that project. We could bring that in. My guess right now is that that project, that gas line could be brought in by the back, you know, so to speak, through the Talbot property to us and through Water Department property, through Diamond's property, and then Locust Street is one of the areas that was talked about, bringing that line in, and the other area would be a little further down towards County Street. So, I don't know which way the gas company would, you know, would be bidding that process. A while back, that cost of that gas main was about $600,000. That would be split amongst the two projects, but that is, that is a potential.
Yeah, would that make, the work that you're doing now needs to be done, without a doubt, but is it smarter to do it now, or is it a totally different area?
It's, so what we would do is we would, as part of this construction project, we would find out exactly where that, that would be coming in from Liberty Utilities, and then we would know whether or not there would be an area we wouldn't finish, so that we wouldn't be digging it up to bring into that building. The building does not have a utility room, so to speak, that would house boilers. The building wasn't built for that, so we would be maybe looking at an exterior addition on the building that would house the heating units that would provide the.
Yeah, I mean, it makes no sense to have an electric building, but if you don't have any other choice, Talbot's not going anywhere, so I support this. I just was, want to make sure that that's still on the radar. If you could maybe update the committee if you get any more info.
Absolutely.
On that, I think it is definitely important that outside of that building looked terrible for years. So with that, I yield. Thank you.
Yeah, Ken, I'm excited about this project. This is good. I'm concerned about, when you talk about drainage, and how is it going to impact the neighbors on Melrose Street? Will it be any effect at all for them?
So it should be an improvement. So basically, a lot of that water spills down the slope on the side, on the west side of Talbot, and then usually goes through properties and different things like that. But it also affects Melrose Street pretty heavily in the wintertime, ices up a lot. So what we're hoping is that the structures, relocation of some of the structures on our property, and also new structures that'll be put on Melrose Street will take, will alleviate most of that. So they will not see any detrimental changes to their property, but they should see some improvements.
Yeah, that's what I'm hoping for, too. And there won't be any compromise to the Northwood Talbot Pond with any of this issue moving forward?
It's flowing there now.
Excuse me?
Yeah, the water is flowing, not to Northwood Talbot, the water is flowing to the, to the drainage swales, culverts on the, on the edge of the Talbot, and then it heads to the Southwood Talbot.
So there's no compromise, no leachate into the pond itself?
No, no, and we're not, we're not going that far. We are just getting to the highway, basically, to pick up those culverts.
Thank you. With that, I yield, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion, a second. Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Chairman, could I, just one thing?
Sure.
The Henry Lord project, I said this during the subcommittee meeting, but I think it's important. The Princeton eighth-grade class at Henry Lord has been very involved in this project, and I visited the classroom. Students were very engaged, and I'm visiting them again on Monday of next week to give them an update as to where we are. But they are, have done a lot of work on their own, so it's been, it's been good, it's been a good project for the school, and they're very interested in seeing the result of their work.
Great stuff, great stuff. Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Dargan?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Lareve?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes.
Number 12, discussion and vote to approve the year-to-date budget report as presented by Kevin Almeida.
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? Kevin?
Yeah, just earlier today, we had a discussion in the subcommittee about Derfie High, and we've had this discussion in the past about in-school suspension, and it's always seemed like, oh, the principals can do it, can, you know, in their way, their own way or whatever. But it was very clear that that's not happening at the high school right now, and that was one of the requests from the high school for next year, and to have an instructional support liaison operate that program. I, for one, personally think that that should be in existence, even though it's only on the Plan B chart. When I look at the year-to-date budget report, which is where we're at right now, and the amount of money that we currently have, including the monies that are going to be coming over after Tuesday's, tomorrow's city council meeting, for money that Mr. Costa was talking about, to me, this is something that we should be doing right now. I don't think that they're presenting it as such, but to me, the need is so great in controlling the school and giving the administrators up there the tools that they need to operate a system to keep their school running properly, that it's a no-brainer, as far as I'm concerned, that we have an in-school suspension room at the high school. It's totally needed. So I'd like to make a motion that we authorize one instructional support liaison at Derfie High School immediately.
Second.
On the second, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
I, I was obviously at the finance subcommittee meeting, and we talked, I brought this up, and I am absolutely in favor of in-school suspension, and I definitely think it is needed at the high school. I've seen it at other high schools, and it does work. So anything that can assist Mr. DeMaris and the other teachers and other administrators up at the high school, I'm all for that. So I, I, I'm absolutely in support of it, so I'll make a second.
Mr. Corey?
Yeah, so I mean, in regard to the discussion on the table now, it's, I'm ready to support it, but I would like to just vet, vet it a little bit more before we come to any kind of decisions, as, and maybe invite Dr. Dargan to, to speak to the committee that she's chairing right now, that's looking at restorative practices for punitive actions, and maybe come to a decision once that they address, you know, either our subcommittee or our full committee in the future.
Mr. Costa?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, you know, I see, I think the sentiment is there that this is a position I think we all would agree that would be beneficial. We heard Principal DeMaris at the subcommittee talk about, you know, the ESE doesn't see a difference between in-school and out-of-school suspension, a suspension's a suspension, and sending kids home is just what he described it, it's a day off. And so, I'm certainly supportive of the position. I just don't know that, since it appears as a high school wish list, where discussion has happened between the administration at the high school and the central administration in your office, Mr. Almeida, that voting it effective immediately in this year's budget certainly makes it something that's going to get rolled forward for next year's budget, and seeing it's a wish list item, I guess the question would become, what is it that's in FY21's proposed budget that's going to be recommended to switch out? Because the positions that are accounted for in FY21's proposed budget didn't include this position. So if we put it in this year's budget, then my, I guess the sentiment would be that it would be next year's budget as well. What's going to get swapped out in order to sustain this position next year? Because certainly not going to approve it this year and then eliminate it several months, four, five months from now, so.
I'd have to identify exactly where we'd get the money from.
If you can, one more time, I'm sorry.
Sorry. I will have to identify exactly where we'd get the money from, for you, for next year.
And have you had that opportunity?
No.
To do that? Do you have any ideas where it could come from?
Yeah, I do.
You willing to share those?
Yeah.
That may, that may determine whether or not I support it tonight.
Well, we still have, the budget's still a process, so we don't know where this is going to, you know, finish out. And, you know, we do have contingency in the budget that if it was an area where we felt this was sufficient, this was a real need, we could take it from there.
And so, you're proposing in FY21 it would come out of contingency, or would you eliminate a position that's already within the proposed budget?
No, I, my suggestion is we wait to see where the budget falls out when this is all said and done, and then take it from there. That would be my first, my first suggestion, but if that's not, if the budget stays the way it is, as it currently stands, I have to find somewhere else in the budget to take it from.
So I'll just say this, I'm 100% in support of it. I just think the process by voting it effective now puts you in the proposed budget.
Understood.
If you had some place tonight you were willing and confident to share with us, what you'd eliminate a switch in the proposed budget for FY21 in order to make this happen, absolutely, I'd take a vote and say yes. I'm going to vote no tonight, not because I don't think it's needed. Clearly, it's needed, and I think it'd be an added tool for the high school, but putting in effective now, I just think hamstrings the budget process going forward. I'd much rather wait, see how this budget process shakes out, and then if the committee wants to take a vote to make it a priority, then maybe that's the first position out.
Yeah.
If we have the funds available, or if you identify an area of FY21 budget that you want to suggest to the committee we spend the funds from, I think it's probably a more informed decision at that point. So, I'm going to vote no, not because I don't think it's needed, it certainly is, but I just, the process for which we're trying to create this, I think, kind of throws a hiccup in FY21 proposed budget. With that, I yield.
Superintendent Malone? So we're talking about an ISL, correct?
Yes.
All right, so it's $30,000. We have built in the next year's budget line items of contingency up over $300,000. We also have in next year's proposed budget class size reductions that are unfunded based on what we see happens. So there is definitely room in next year's budget to fit, to fit this without taking anything else out. We're also anticipating, given where we are in the process, that we feel strongly that the House and the Senate's numbers at 100% will increase, so we also have some flexibility there. But we have maximum flexibility. Mr. Costa, I really like your support on it, I understand what you're saying, but I want to state strongly that we can do this by spending unexpendated funds in other ways without committing to pulling a position off, as all of the positions that we're proposing came up as the most important through the process, although we do know that there will be more changes based on what the committee wants as the time goes.
And I appreciate that, Superintendent Malone. I just think that you have principals here who could make the argument that one of those items that they have on a wish list was something you could take from the funding you just proposed, and I think it just opens the floodgates for, well, if it's an ISS position at the high school, then why not my SAC at halftime at this other, at Tansy, or why isn't it a, you know, another item that appears on the wish list to be taken out of those funds? And we just can't continue to create positions on, we know that 100% is going to be increased, or we suspect it'll be increased, or we have contingency, because then what's the, you know, what's the point of budgeting? So, I appreciate that. I appreciate your, you know, the information you've provided, but I still think that it's a needed position. I just think the process in which we're trying to create it, I just don't think is, it's a slippery slope, and I think we find ourselves trying to decide, well, ESL, ISS, and ISS, excuse me, position is important, why not another position that appears on that list, and why is one more important than the other? I think we can all agree, all the positions there would be important to the district, or they wouldn't be on that list, it's just the process in which we're going about adopting those. So, with that, I yield.
Mr. Malone?
I just want to add one more thing. If this does get supported, my commitment is that we, I would immediately subtract $30,000 from contingency so that the budget is fully transparent and everyone can see that I used that money as a request to support that position for next year, so you wouldn't be voting on anything that is kicking the can down the road. It would be accurate and factual.
Mr. Corey?
Dr. Dargan, can I, can I ask you to come to the podium, please? Am I in line when I say that, I like this proposal very much, but before we move into it, I just wanted to look at that particular position a little bit more closely, and would that align with the discussion that your committee was having earlier on restorative justice?
Absolutely.
And would it be something that maybe your committee could help shape, maybe what the description for this job might look like moving forward?
Absolutely.
That's what I was concerned about more than anything, was to try to vet this, not just blindly move into an ISS position, but maybe see what we can do to fortify it into a really great position that's going to help kids, you know, therapeutically moving forward, the kids that really need it.
We're actually working on a grant right now, very similar to the North Shore, which is called the PASS Program, and we're looking at an opportunity for our youngsters who might need some type of suspension, a two to possibly a 10-day, not for every infraction, there would be certain infractions, that we would have an academic component, but that we would have a huge therapeutic component as well. And some of our partners, our community partners, have already made a commitment to us that should we get this grant, that they would be able to provide some of that therapeutic support. So we'd be looking for an instructor, an instructional leader for that program, as well as a social worker to work directly with the students. So again, it wouldn't be for that one day, but it would be a two to a 10-day suspension where the youngsters would clearly get not only a consequence, but that they would get some kind of restorative justice or therapeutic program as well.
Thank you. I just wanted that to come out for the committee to be able to hear, so that as we move forward, we have a better idea of what we're looking at. Thank you very much. With that, I yield.
And, did you say you're going to put kids in in-school suspension for up to 10 days?
We can suspend youngsters for up to 10 days.
Yeah, but not in an in-school suspension setting?
Yes, we can.
I know, but that, that, I don't, I hope that that. I, I know, but that, that, I don't, I hope that that's not where we're going with in-school suspension.
Again, we'd be, no, we'd be looking at certain infractions too. This isn't, this isn't well thought out yet at this point in time. It, it can't be anything that's, you know, criminal pending, you know, charges or anything like that.
I just want to be clear that anything outside of the regular school day, outside of class is continued, is considered a suspension. So there are other, some systems are using, through the S E L model, it's labeled as an in-school suspension, although it's a, a time where kids are, for lack of a better term, corrected, counseled, and allowed to make amends, if you will, to avoid the outside suspension. So it's any sort of pulled out of the classroom. But we have no intent to do the old model of in-school suspension standard, all 10 days straight.
No, that was not my model. That was not my model. Hold on a second.
That was my model when I used to be a principal.
The other thing, did you say you're getting a grant to fund the teacher?
We applied for the grant. We haven't heard yet whether we will get the grant. We applied probably about a week and a half ago. We expect in the next six weeks or so. It is a Department of Ed grant.
Okay. And how much was the grant for?
$100,000. So we're godly optimistic because we did receive, that's the grant that you approved previously. So we're godly optimistic that this is the continuation of the work that we've started.
And that $100,000 is for in-school suspension at Durfee?
It, it would, well, if we decide we're going to house it at Durfee. Again, those are all decisions. The North Shore houses theirs, actually, at a local Y M C A program. So again, yes, it would be for high school students.
Okay. Thank you. And?
Yes, you're welcome.
So just briefly, I, I think this is a no-brainer that we should submit, support tonight. So the issue we've had over the years has been, and I've mentioned this at multiple meetings, that what is the, what is the in-school suspension program at all of the schools? I think we're all in agreement that at some point, it's better to keep the kids in school and work with them there than have to send them out. Doesn't mean that the kids are going to get suspended for the entire day, as Mr. Damaris said at the meeting earlier. It can be a place for the kid to take a break for a little while, to therapeutically work with the counselors and other folks, and come back. It also is a place that kids could work all day. It's an, it's a model that, the fact that we do not have this position at a school, in an urban school, with 2,000 students, is absurd. So part of the reason why I want to make this motion now, and the urgency now, is because quite frankly, it should have been in the budget last year and the years prior. So the urgency now is, we just heard about it, we've been hearing about the need for certain things, and give more support to the high school. Let's just do it. It's going to cost us like $18,000 or something crazy for the year. And let's not forget that we have $600,000 in unexpended funds that are in the budget right now. Tuesday, we're getting 1.8 million more dollars from the city to come over, and you're talking about we might not do this for 18,000 for the year? Come on, please. We need to do it. We need to support the people up there, and this is a position that I think will benefit the whole school and the children, and that's what we're here for. Please, I ask you to vote for this. Thank you.
Lee?
This position, if we do agree tonight, this position, am I correct to say, it's not going to be supporting an ISS program because it's not developed yet? Is that accurate?
The grant program, the Positive Approach to Student Success, the PASS program, is something that we have worked on, where there's the therapeutic component, that there is some community service, as well as some academics. That would not be ready for full implementation yet. This would be an in-school suspension right now.
Okay, thank you.
Judge?
So I think it's great that you brought this up, Kev. My only concern, and I'm going to vote for it, I want to know, but I'm concerned because, you know, you bring it up, and if every, every principal here might want that same $30,000 position right now, and it kind of circumvents the system, right? It's all got, this budget got vetted with each, you know, school, central administration, they kind of put together the wish list, there's 70 other positions here. Some of them might also be in the same salary area. So I think it's a great idea, but, I mean, every principal could ask us for something, or every one of us up here could just say, hey, I want this position right now, I want this position right now. And it's kind of opening up the floodgates, if you will. But it sounds like it's needed, and it's been needed for a while. I think we can handle it, but I just, definitely caution, moving forward, taking something like that and not following the proper procedure for the budget. With that, I yield.
Anything further? Deb, call the roll on Kevin's amendment?
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
No.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
No.
Ms. Larabee?
No.
Mayor Coogan?
No. Now, on the vote to approve the end-of-the-year budget report?
So moved. Second.
Kevin?
Can you articulate to the, to the full committee how much money is available in the current budget? Since we just voted not to spend short money, please articulate for us how much money's available.
About $660,000.
And how much money is going to be brought over on Tuesday night's city council meeting to the school committee?
I, I haven't seen it tonight. I haven't seen the agenda yet, but...
The agenda reads 1.8 million dollars. Is any of that money set aside right now for funding?
No.
So what is your plan for that? 2.4 million dollars?
In, in conjunction with the superintendent, we will come up with a spending plan that we bring forward to the school committee.
And I think that's part of the problem here, is that we have the resources here. And because we want to talk about not being the right process or anything like that, if I want to, if I go back two mon, two meetings ago, maybe three meetings ago, we sat here as a committee, and somebody from the audience came up and said, you're not funding the drama program in the middle school. Guess what this committee did? We came up with 20 or 40 grand right off the bat. I'm really disappointed in the fact that we can't make decisions at these meetings that are going to say, what's in the best interest of kids and the school and the program? It's really disheartening. And the fact that we just had that money, that I just told you how much money is going to be there, that we should not only have this program in, in place, so that the, the high school can actually hire somebody now and lock somebody into a good quality position for next year, all the other schools that were just mentioned by my colleagues down there, they should be bringing stuff forward as well. Because we have 2.4 million dollars more that's coming to this school system, and we're not giving it to the teachers right now and the people to get the resources for the kids. I find that totally, absolutely absurd, that we have that much resources coming into this district, and we're not supporting the people that are busting their butt in there to try and make a difference for kids. The last vote was, was something that we shouldn't have, we shouldn't have done. Superintendent has, has talked months about making sure that we have in-school suspension-type programs at all of our schools. But the problem is, is we don't have enough resources. So the principals that are out there are saying, well, what am I going to do now? I gotta either use my person for this, or use my person for that. This is an idea to say, which is right from the high school, instructional support liaison. Durfee presently does not have an in-school suspension. The intent is to add another tool for grade officers to address student issues while keeping the students in the building. Who doesn't agree with that? I'm sorry to be upset about it, but it really frustrates the heck out of me, that we sit here and we want to make good decisions, quality decisions, and then we take a vote like we just took. With that, I yield.
Mr. Costa?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's not whether or not we agree as a group that it's needed. I think everybody here spoke in favor of it. It's, it's the process and how it's being developed. If you want to bring a recommendation back to this committee with the superintendent to spend the 2.4 million dollars, then we don't have a wish list anymore next year. Let's just hire all those positions this year and just roll them into next year's budget, because they're all important. It's about process. I'm not saying there's not going to be a time when you're going to bring it forwards with identified funding. It's part of the budget process. That's how we should be creating positions. Mr. Agia is absolutely right. We're going to have plenty of resources. The question becomes, is it going to be the recommendation of, of you as the CFO to this committee to spend that money? How much money does it cost for the positions that are on that wish list, the 73 FY21 ballpark?
I'd, I'd have to add it up.
Is it more or less than 2.4 million?
Probably two and a half to three million dollars.
Two and a half to three million?
Yeah.
So is there going to be a motion tonight to spend the two and a half, or 2.4 million dollars we're anticipating getting, to hire all those positions for next year? It's not about whether or not we have the money. It is short money, and it's needed. But we just heard there's a grant process out there to create a program at the high school. This will simply put a teacher in a classroom and say, well, send students to me. Well, what are they going to do in that classroom? Are they just going to sit in the classroom? Is there any program? Are we going to meet the needs? Are we going to do any kind of therapeutic approach? Are we going to address their social emotional issues? Are we going to get to the core of, with behavioral therapists of why they got sent there? No. We're going to spend $18,000 essentially putting a substitute teacher or a teacher in that classroom to send kids to for the remainder of the year while we wait for a program that's been obviously thought out about how we look to impact those students and why they're being sent there. So I, I, I understand Mr. Agia's frustration, but I also take offense to the fact that it's just sort of, that this committee as a group didn't see the same logic. We do, and it's important, it's needed. And when it comes back before this committee with a recommendation to create a program or to create a system in place to make ISS work at the high school, it'll absolutely get that support. Mr. Damaris was okay with it remaining as a wish list for next year. He didn't ask for $18,000 for Para because he saw it was a critical need for the remainder of this year. Had he done that, maybe things would have been different, but he didn't come and speak to that. He was saying he was happy with it being on his, on his wish list, and that it was something that he would foresee in next year's budget. I, I, I agree with Mr. Agia. It's definitely needed, and, and we're going to, I think as a committee, come to that point. But to, to do it now, it is short money. We have resources available. But without a solid plan on how we're going to address it, it's absolutely needed, and, and my colleague, Mr. Agia, is absolutely correct. It should have been in private, probably in previous budgets, and it should have been a program designed to address the students who we were going to refer there. But that isn't in place yet. And so when that happens, I think we'll be in a better position as a group to be in 100% support of it, because it clearly is needed. With that, I yield.
I, I do want to say something. I was the first in-school suspension teacher hired in the Farver Public Schools. That was my first job. And I, I do support in-school suspension. I think, I think Kevin's on the right track as far as the program. I don't think he's on the right track as far as how to do it. Mr. Damaris did say it was on his wish list right now. But I do agree with Mr. Costa that we have had numerous, numerous failures of in-school suspension at Durfee High School because we did not have the right people in those positions. We would put a sub in there, or we'd put someone in that was looking for a job for the rest of the year, and invariably you'd go by, and the guy would be sitting there on his phone, reading the paper. The kids would be doing little to no work. I agree with what Dr. Dargan said about a structured program. I don't agree with 10 days, but I do agree with a structured program where, when I ran the program, they'd come in in the morning, we'd do current events as a group. During the day, they'd work on their academics. At the end of the day, we would have a guest speaker, we'd have a program for the last period on sexual harassment, coping skills, bullying, and give them something to go out of there on a high point with. I think doing what we've done way too many times in the Farver Public Schools and say, there's a room, there's 12 desks, you're going to do in-school suspension from now till June, it, it really doesn't work. It's, I've seen it. It's, it turns into a dumping ground, and it's not the way to do it. If there's a program where they come in, they sign papers, they acknowledge the work they have to do, it can work, but it has to be highly structured. And I don't even know if starting one this late in the year is even doable at this time. But Kevin is on the point of an in-school suspension at Durfee as the first teacher. I support it 100%. I'm not sure doing it this way with a, take it now at the end of the year is the way to go. Mr. Agia?
I would just like to respectfully ask the central administration, once again, to please submit to the full committee the in-school suspension plan for each school in our district. Something that I've asked for in the past, just so that we can all be on the same page. And I think it's just a matter of not enough people, really, quite frankly. It's not being critical. But we have heard in the past that this is an option. I would just like to see what it is, because a good point today could be that we got to look at it and say, do we do this across the district? What's the model? This and that. But ultimately, I do think that we need to address this issue. So if I could just respectfully ask the administration to get us that information. Thank you, I yield.
Mr. Malone and Mr. Hart?
I just want to be real clear with the committee that it's happenstance based on the numbers of people that we have. But each building has a building sub that they have daily. We also have other personnel that they can assign. This in-school suspension is based on different crises at the time, so we don't have a district-wide plan for in-school suspension, to answer your question. But I can, for the committee, let them know exactly what each school does when they have the ability to do it. And then, as we continue to talk about this, of course, as Dr. Dargan pointed out, what the full-blown plan is down the road.
Mr. Hart?
Just quickly, Mr. Superintendent, what's happening right now at Durfee High School without the in-school suspension?
In terms of?
When, when some, when a student maybe causes a ruckus, causes something?
Suspension and it's pretty much out of district, out of school suspension is the norm across the district.
He's getting sent home?
Yes.
Right now?
Yeah, we're way off the motions, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you know, do you know actually how many new suspensions are, are going on right now?
Of education keeps, we have to upload all the information against reporters, part of our accountability profile that can provide you last years, the last couple of years is, is from the state reporting.
All right. Now, I'm just going to say, it's just, it's a big issue. I know it is for everybody here. It is, you know, and I, I think it's a, a very good program. I do hope we can maybe hurry the, hurry the grant up of Ms. Dargan. I don't know at what stage I should have asked that, but you don't have to come down. I'll just ask you after the meeting. But it's, it's something that is absolutely needed. I think that we could have, you know, maybe just made a slight impact for this year if it got approved. But I'm confident that we're going to, we're going to get the in-school suspension program going. But I thought that maybe tonight, we could have made just a slight impact until the rest of the year, but that's all.
Okay.
Yeah, Tom? To echo the chairman's comments, in, in my collegial work while we were at Durfee, I, I saw just a flat line on that entire concept. And I know that Dr. Dargan is putting together a real structured plan right now to help address those needs as we move forward. I thoroughly respect my colleagues' comments, intentions, and passion in regard to this issue. It is an issue that needs to be addressed, and I'm glad that we're talking about it publicly. And, and I know that all, all, my suggestion is to just table it for the moment as we continue to work on a structured plan so that we can institute a plan that's going to work in restorative ways. With that, I yield.
We have a motion and a second on Kevin's year-to-date budget report. Deb, call the roll.
Ms. Agia?
I'm sorry? On the amendment, no, on the budget. No. On the amendment we voted?
Come on, the budget. Can I, not about that. I have a different question.
Oh, about the budget?
The budget?
Kevin's?
Yes.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
So just briefly, if we could also get a copy of, I know this came up at one of prior, I think the budget meeting, the last one, when Mr. Costa was talking about the reg, the amount that's in the, like, the generic amount versus the regular amount, so we get an actual amount, to try to see what the actual amount on the budget is for next year. You recall the conversation, Ms. Darmida? So what I would like to, what I would like to get, because I think it is important that we get to know what's going on, especially in the light of the votes that was taken today, that we get to see that number in the current year as well.
What, I need, I just need some background.
Which number are you talking about? So Mr. Costa brought up a valid point at one of the meetings, where we have the 88,000, let's say for an administrator, and not the actuals. So he had asked at that time for the actuals for each of the salaries, so when we add them up, we see what the number comes out as.
Didn't we already provide?
So my point is, is if that's good enough for next year's budget, I would like to ask for that number in the current year. That's all. With that, I yield.
We provided all the salaries.
I did give it to the committee. They have all that information. Now.
We did.
Yeah, that's all, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you. I yield.
Okay, let's go with, let's go with the roll call vote.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larabee?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. For your information, we have a number of retirements, resignations.
To accept and place on file.
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Do we have any new business to come before the committee? Mr. Hassan, do we have a request for executive session?
There would be a need for an executive session.
Motion for executive session? For the purposes of?
For the purposes of, that's right.
Purposes of, Mass General Law's Chapter 38, Section 2187, to review and approve executive session committee minutes for the February 10, 2020, regular meeting of the Farver School Committee. Also, Mass General Law's Chapter 38, Section 2183, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all cafeteria employees to the Farver School System represented by the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, Council 93, Local 1118, as the chair has determined that an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of... detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee, Mass General Law's Chapter 38, Section 2183, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all maintenance employees of the Forver School System represented by the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, Council 93, Local 1118, as the chair has determined that an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee, Mass General Law's Chapter 38, Section 2183, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all custodial employees of the Forver School System represented by the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, Local, I'm sorry, Council 93, Local 1118, as the chair has determined that an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee, also, Mass General Law's Chapter 38, Section 2183, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all safety, security employees of the Forver School System represented by the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, Council 93, Local 1118, as the chair has determined that an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee, Mass General Law's Chapter 38, Section 2183, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all administrators and employees represented by the Forver Administrators Association, as the chair has determined that an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee, Mass General Law's Chapter 38, Section 2183, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all professional teaching employees of the Forver School System, including coaches, title-one teachers, nurses, occupational, physical therapists, and specialists in the teaching profession, represented by the Forver Educators Association, as the chair has determined that an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee, Mass General Law's Chapter 38, Section 2182, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, specifically the new assistant superintendent, chief academic officer of the Forver School Department, to be selected and appointed by the school committee in open session at the March 9, 2020, regular meeting of the Forver School Committee, Miss Ponce, as the superintendent of schools, sole recommended candidate for appointment to the position of assistant superintendent, chief academic officer for the Forver School Department, also, Mass General Law's Chapter 38, Section 2182, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiation with non-union personnel and/or to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel, including Brittany Sousa, Instructional Support Liaison, State Sketch, and Financial Manager. We will reconvene, there may or may not be statements at that time.
Roll call and second session.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes.
Deb, roll call, please.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Here.
Mr. Hart?
Here.